Okay, so it's 7:02, we'll call to order. I was notified this afternoon that Brendan had a family emergency, so was not gonna be able to be present tonight, so he asked me to run the meeting. First item on the agenda is the approval of... Or actually, let's skip that. And we'll tape that just for momentarily. And let's get Mike up here. Our capital improvement plan business.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think I've told you this, CIPs are absolutely my favorite planning project. Classic American governments. It's an advisory document, though. My very first planning project, when I was a young planning technician at the Southwest Region Planning Commission in the late eighties. They can really be used for good by department heads. Especially when they're kind of rolled over, lop a year off, out of here. This is a compressed CIP process, so we basically have a one-pager that gives context to what it is, what it's not, what the objectives of the CIP are. Basically, stabilizing the municipal tax rate, use it as a tool, and have the budget committee use it as a seat fit. They can also, during the process, anybody can put it aside because it's an advisory document. But I've always thought it was best used by individual apartment heads to make a pitch for cap reserves, to kind of lay out the thought pattern behind what the needs are. It's not maintenance, it's capital expenditures. As can you still have been looking through this? We've reviewed this with Ken, and I would like to cycle back through the select board because my question, when we met as just a few of us kicked it around, was wouldn't this, more than a question, a thought, that wouldn't this be stronger if we had the road improvement program within it? So instead of having a number for road improvements every year, but to lay out what the potential plan is for the next five, six years. And that's kind of my last... You know, this is a draft because I think it's much better if that's in there. It doesn't have to be. And we, half of the CIPs we do have it in, half they don't. But we did do a road surface management system last two summers ago. The base is there for that information to kind of lay out what the potential roads could be within the road program.
Without the road program, is this, let's say that doesn't happen for whatever reason or happens too late, is this sufficient?
This is sufficient.
Justify our alternatives, develop whatever it's called?
You could, I would say, this is a core, you've gone through the process and doing a CIP. Who knows when you're defending, if you got to the point, you know, defending your building permit limitation, if you ever got to that, if this would spice. But you don't have the same kind of ambulance cost situation where it's not just you, it's that, so it's not as clear-cut. I think you've gone ahead and done your CIP. It'd be fine. It'd be better if it had the road improvement.
My recollection...
Okay, go ahead. I got two questions.
My recollection from the master plan is that January is unusual in the amount of out of road that town is possible for, which to me would take, we really should include that if possible.
You know, I like it for having to lay out the plan. I like it even more for being able to defend the funding for the road program year after year because the plan's laid out. And really, the key to the CIP is having an understanding that... Yeah, I'll go through the spreadsheet, but the use of cap reserves is the key. And not, you've got that $250,000 rescue truck or more in year five, well, okay, you're leveling out the impact in this tax rate because you've been putting aside cap reserves. And if anything, that's, it's a clearer outline of that plan at every county.
Can we put aside $12,000 a year for that?
We've laid out all the different cap reserves. So there's, I think, a little more work to do on seeing if the roads plan gets in. But basically, staff put together the narrative. The one thing that kind of struck me is that having police vehicles in the same year. But, you know, that is sometimes the role of a CIP committee, to make a recommendation. We have found sometimes that just everything gets stacked up in year four. And it's a good process to say, okay, well, maybe stuff should go into year three or year five. Maybe that happens when this is a more mature process. And you've got a year on your belt and you go through the process and adopting it, and okay, maybe in the next iteration, we kind of lay out and say, okay, every other year there's a police vehicle versus having them stacked up in one. So basically, we have these... We put our description of what a CIP is into one page. That's the one page in the front. Second page is, okay, here's some narrative about the project. It's important to know what you have in your cap reserves. So, you know, Jan pulled together for... Where'd you do that in, Sean?
Jan did.
Jan pulled together as of March 30th, so it's a little more up-to-date than even the end of the calendar year of what you have in your cap reserves. The spreadsheet is the CIP, though. And it's basically, and we actually have out 15 years. Classic CIP, six years. It starts to fade even in years four, five, and six. So we've got all that, and that could help feed the next time around. The six years basically above the line are, what are the expected capital expenditures by department? Below the line, and then what are the cap reserves that you would expect to put into the funds every year? Below the line is, you know, what can you use to offset those funds? So we've got the use of those cap reserves. And ultimately, it's what's the impact per thousand on the municipal tax rate?
What is the...
What do you mean by above the line, below the line?
So there's a preliminary total, where what's the cost? And then below that line is how are we offsetting those costs every year to lower the impact of the municipal tax rate tag here? So offsetting revenues, highway truck capital reserve fund, the rescue truck reserve fund, the load of reserve fund. So, not said, is that, you know, if it's not... Well, it is said, but what the municipal tax rate is, but it's, you know, everything else is tax impacted.
Sorry, question.
Go ahead. Let's say you get appointed to some high-ranking position next year. What is the infrastructure in the town to maintain this next year and the year after, the year after?
It's the planning board's role. So thankfully, it's been, you know, here's, let's do a check in January. Let's update, it's lop a year off, out of here. And it's, you know, it's a letter from the planning board, a department heads, what's changed, here's the form. Can you give us your projects for this year? How would you propose paying for that? You've lopped off that year, you've added a year. You can update your CIP in April.
If I can ask the chair, is there a to-do list, checklist, or whatever, that has that on it?
There has been talk of that to-do list, hasn't there?
Yes, there has been.
No, there isn't.
But it's just, that's the cycle, and if you skip a year, it's hard. Because you're lopping off to, it's that, okay, this is our process, and we have some towns that are just, yeah, this is what we do every year, and we add to it.
Well, now that you did all this, keeping it up, maintaining it, year after year is not that big a deal. Forgetting it for four or five years is...
You know, you go and you factor, like, for the out years, we've estimated the increase in that valuation, so we can estimate the impact of municipal tax rate. So you go and you make sure, see how close you got to the estimate, and you rejigger that. But no, it shouldn't be that hard, as long as you keep up with it. And it's, you know, it's just, it's come New Year's, it's time to do it.
So having not been privy to the process, you and Jan, was it, that worked on it? Did you guys reach out to the department?
Yes, so we've got some forms that the department heads filled out. We use that to fill out the form. So these are the years that they were proposed. And they gave us more, like I said, out 15 years. So, you know, there could be some, maybe there's a little bit more discussion of things that are planned for years seven, eight, nine, that we could put just a little narrative in. But, you know, key to the six years is the cleanest, and it's, I think, meeting the requirements of those CIPs.
Are those forms for the department heads, do we have them?
I have copies of them.
I mean, but...
Jan has a file with the data that she collected from the department heads.
And they did a nice job. The hardest times, hardest part of sometimes is the department heads to play.
I just got two questions, I didn't want to catch up here. So along in this spreadsheet, is there, like, a minimum expenditure that goes on this? I mean, obviously, it's not coffee machine upkeep and...
It's $10,000 bucks that we typically use.
$10,000?
Yeah. It could usually be $5,000. You could probably make a case for it to be $25,000, that it's a capital expenditure. But smaller communities tend to still use $10,000.
So then, you're talking, using the capital reserve. One big question I have, like, for example, the police department, where they have the two cruisers and 29. Two of them are $70,000. And it's two years prior to that. Wouldn't it... Is it intuitive to think that we could take and spend $20,000 a year to get up to that 70, rather than spend, get hit with the 70s that one year? Or are there other expenditures that year that preclude that?
I don't, you know, a lot of times you get these and there's like, the impact's $4 one year and $0.32 the next year. You don't, you're not to that extreme. I think if there's a confidence level from a CIP committee to make those recommendations, so I think it might be just from being, you know, helping out over these, over these many years, that might be something for year two. But you could also say, hey, you know, this is what it says, and this would be, you know, this is how we would recommend laying out. Say, why don't you go a year earlier, a year later, or bump up the cap reserves a year before.
Question, so this is the CIPs, these projects are recommendations, they're not mandatory?
This is absolutely an advisory document that the budget committee can just say, thanks, that was great.
Got it, okay, so the two crews, like, replacing the 2021 cruiser, this isn't a decision that's been made...
So many steps the budget committee to town meet, yes.
Essentially, a department wish list?
It, so you hope it's not the wish list, and it's like, yes.
A reasonable...
They started the requests from, you know, they asked the department heads. So, you know, I have seen planning boards beat up department heads over the CIP process, and it's adversarial. Almost, you know, playing the budget committee role. I don't think it needs to be that. I think this is a tool for the budget committee and the select board to lead into budget season.
Yeah, that doesn't say necessarily...
And you've done your job to attempt to get a feel for what those expenditures are. And ultimately, it's a requirement to have in place if you have a building permit limitation. But it's a classic advisory argument.
So the process isn't, they give us the form, and then we're like, well, why this? It's just to put it in, not to mention it.
So there are towns that, there is a hot seat and folks could grow. And like I said, that's more adversarial than I think the process should be because it's a tool for the use of budget committee. Let the budget committee do that way, or, you know, on the floor of town meeting.
So question. You talked about lopping off a year and adding a year in January. How, what, so January, the budget committee is always smoking, getting ready for town meeting?
Budget committee's done, you're done with that budget season, you're doing the next year. So...
What is typically... Are we looking for input from the budget committee?
Yeah, you could, just to kind of complete the circle.
What they did from the last town meeting, I guess, is...
What, did you use the CIP? How could it be better? Every budget committee's a little different on how they're gonna use it.
I can see, I can see this getting muddied real fast.
And you don't want it to be misused.
Well, it's almost like somebody needs to be in charge of it. You mentioned the planning...
The planning board is, it's a planning...
I regret to say that is us.
It's, at town meeting years ago, you guys were identified as the board to prepare the CIP. So, but it is, again, a tool meant to be handed to the budget committee. And, you know, again, I've seen budget committees say, this is great, you know, we're gonna start here, or, yeah, thanks. And we're gonna go now through our process.
Come on. Go ahead.
You sure? Just curious about the rationale for that. So this isn't like a state-level RSA that says that planning boards do this. This was a town decision some time ago?
This is a, the RSA allows you to predict that. So, and then it's laid out at town meeting, who does it?
I think with innovative land use and our budget, our building cap.
Yeah, that was my next question, is the rationale, why, how does this tie into the planning board's work?
The, if I can answer that, the only reason I care about this, sort of town planning is all that's great, someone else's job, but the reason I care about it for the first, as far as the planning board goes, is that we, that the RSA requires that to justify our innovative land use, whatever you call them, innovative, which we have a lot of. We need to have this, this is a prerequisite for those. And that was my first question to you, is this a sufficient prerequisite? It sounds like probably is.
I, so it is, yes. Sure, could it be that adversarial process that da-da-da? But I, you could argue all sides, all kinds, like, you know, is it, does it meet every single specification to defend your building permit limitation?
That's why we're in charge of it.
Yeah, that's, just from my own understanding, the connection to the planning board and the rationale for us doing it makes sense.
Somebody's got it.
Well, there was another thing that came up, I did one of those... Lunchtime, whatever...
Offspring development.
Seminars, and one of the things, the big takeaway that I got from there was that somebody suggested that especially towns that have multiple chapters in their master plan, that you don't wait until the lapse or the expiration of it, that you begin as soon as you approve it the next year, you do a chapter or two.
I think we're finding many more towns doing that. Especially since we really don't print that many of our copies anymore.
And it's not as, such a burden to do. So you take a chapter or two and you do that next year. And then the following year, you take another chapter or two and do it that year. So that way, it's constantly updating.
And we are five years late.
Well, I mean, it was a huge pass, though. I mean, it was a huge pass to start from scratch.
But that is much more common to do, to have it be evergreen and do a chapter or two a year.
So I mentioned this to somebody, and I think I meant, I'm not sure if I mentioned it to Brendan or not, but...
Sometimes it is nice to take a full-year gap, though.
Yeah.
I'm gonna sell some space from it. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna update different chapters at different times, it would become important to have like a last updated date attached to each chapter.
Sure.
Because otherwise, it might not be...
Put it right in the footer, yeah.
So I would like to circle back with, because that was kind of a, we left our last conversation. Should we, you know, would the select board be interested and want to have the roads planned in there? We can help with it. You know, we, you know, our staff helped with the road surface management. We know how, you know, so it's pretty straightforward. It's just, do you want to have that level of detail in the CIP or not?
Is that something you want us to ask the select board, or...
I can ask Ken, again, and we can ask, just to see if, I think they...
I would say yes, because of the miles of dirt road. I mean, that's the expenditure, you know, I mean...
And I want this, you want it to be used and have value and have it be, have more value to the department heads, too, to be able to use it. So that more detail is helpful. And that's why CIPs don't get updated, because they, you know, they weren't used and the budget committee didn't use it.
Somebody has thought for an opinion? I'll give an opinion, I agree with Mike. I think there's a good reason to include that. And I think it gets our road agent thinking along those lines, so.
A lot of times, road agents have an opinion about these things.
Yes, they do.
And we have found more recently that road agents are embracing it because it helps them. So Matt Baronis has gone to the Bradford town meeting a couple times over the last four years to just, this is what we saw, and then that leads into the, this is why these roads are identified.
Yeah.
For the funding source, to support those improvements.
Yeah, and we're fortunate, I think, once this summer's over, that dirt road project that we got the ARPA funds for, that will be complete. So that'd be a great time to do something like that.
So, and it's probably, it's worth just bringing this spreadsheet now that it's down to six years and we've kind of brought it all in for the select board to see it. I could circle back the next time.
So the process, where we're at, so you're gonna circle back around?
You would want to do a public hearing, just like regulations.
Okay.
Just like a master plan. Consider it for adoption. So we'd want to have the draft to be able to be posted and have that process.
What's the timeline on getting the road stuff into it?
We could probably do it in a couple weeks, so it'd be pretty quick. Really depends on... This is also sometimes a hard time to get the road agent to stop.
Yep.
Oh, by the way, we want to talk. Do those 7:00, 8:00 AM meetings before they start.
Okay, so I'm sure Brendan will read the minutes, so he will know that it's kind of in limbo. So in regards to the question you had about the road improvements, you want to schedule it for, once that is included into it, we all know that it's gonna be included into it, so probably, it really isn't gonna be any surprise or any other additions. Brendan will take in, once we know like it's inserted, then we can just go ahead and schedule a public hearing.
Perfect.
Does that make sense?
And I think it's important for us to communicate clearly when we schedule that with the public, what this document is, so people don't look at this and say, wait, this is our plan, and have all kinds of opinions about the details and the line items. And we're doing that, no, we're not doing that, but these are proposed projects. So communicating that to not cause a...
Well... We want, might want to add to the one-pager, the objective of the CIP is justifying the innovative land use planning, or whatever the official name of that is. Because I think that will answer the question to a member of the public, like, you just said, why are we doing this at all?
Sounds good.
We can even cite the RSA. So it could just be simple, like, number four, support the innovative land use provisions in our ordinance.
Great. So you can see why I think snack piece is really cool. If you use them.
Yep. Since Mike is here, can I suggest we discuss this?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we...
Sure.
Why don't we...
It's time to do some public sessions. So, so your land develop, let me ask you what the changes to the land development regs in March were?
None.
Okay. Because I saw the date of March.
Yeah, that... Sorry, go ahead. And we're gonna fix that.
Because it was November.
There's some, yeah, there's some confusion and as far as the paperwork and... Try not to say names, don't blame anyone, because I'm not. But there was a... It got lost, the signature page got lost, and it was refound. And then it was surfaced in another pile, and we're not... So what we're gonna do tonight is we are going to take and re-adopt them and make it official, use today's date, because there was that discrepancy with the November date and the March date. And even the signatures had March and April, and it was like...
But you had a hearing in November.
Correct.
Correct. And then, okay, great. I was asking Matt, and he's like, I think it was November.
Yeah, we did adopt it, and we, and I think the land use, we've left the caveat that we can take and amend them at any point now, now that they've been adopted, without going to public hearing.
No, we can amend, we can correct it, non-substantive things.
There you go, okay, that's what I'm thinking of.
Like numbering and...
And on the checklist, you're meeting on the 17th.
Correct. So that's the last...
And that should be at the end.
Yes, great. So then we can, we can adopt them tonight, and then the checklist, we can take and do another sheet to...
Perfect.
Sign off on.
So we are voting again to adopt them, and then the effective date will be tonight?
I believe so, because it is...
Does that affect any, anybody's applications sort of in...
Well, there were two applications heard last, I wasn't here, last meeting for subdivision, and those presumably operate under whatever existed before.
The old sign-off sheet, the questionable sign-off sheet. All right, so it was November 12th. But then, the earliest signature was March 24th.
So I would propose that you refer back to that November 12th approval date you've got in the minutes, right?
Yes. So then, do we, do we want to redo a sheet with signatures? Or do we want to, are we gonna work with this and get Sam to sign it?
The legal thing is called numprotunk, when you, when you...
Say that again.
Numprotunk, when you, when something you signed today is effective at some earlier time.
That was the only...
And I think that might be what this is, is we signed it today, but it was effective in November whatever. So it's numprotunk. So it's num pro tunk date is November.
Don't spell that first.
That's it, so this is my, my concern, is that it that we want it to be effective as when we first approved it.
I can, I can read the paragraph if that helps. If you, if referencing the November twelfth meeting, I can read the paragraph that are in the minutes. Joshua supported voting as amended, but found the document needed more editing and offered to be on the subcommittee. Joshua wanted to edit on page six, the general introduction to section one point one, first paragraph, and Matt agreed to edit it and change the language to say on the cover page, adopted, to effective, and change into paragraph to, it is recognized that these regulations are a living document subject to amendment by a vote of the board in accordance with RSA, New Hampshire RSA. Too many RSAs, six seventy five seven, as may be amended from time to time, this. So that's the only thing that's in there.
And I don't think that's substantive, that's, you adopted them with that language.
Yeah. So we adopted them, so on the front, it was, we changed it from adopted to effective.
November twelfth.
November twelfth.
Yeah, I think we can consider them adopted, effective, effective.
And then we amended it on March eighteenth, there's another line down here, so what did we do March eighteenth?
I know that Matt was here that day, and maybe he was closing down that loop, but I didn't see anything in the minutes that was substantive about an vote. Sounds like you adopted your regulations on November twelfth. I was at that March meeting and my recollection was, none of it was substantive, it was all very technical.
Well.
That was just my memory though.
Yeah. I agree, I I think we adopted it November twelfth. My question is, what did we amend in March without, it'd be nice to see what the minutes say regarding.
That's why that's the sign off sheet is, the first date is after, is in March.
Yeah.
So whatever we amended in March should be in the minutes, right?
What date, March what?
Eighth, I think. There wasn't a lot in it, in the room today. I don't think it was a March, I don't think the March meeting was a planning board meeting, I think it was a.
March eighteenth, Megan.
Wasn't it just the task force of committee? I think there was a, there was a planning board meeting, Matt, cause Matt was here.
I can tell you if it was a planning board meeting.
It was.
It was a.
It was.
Yeah. So do the minutes on that meeting say anything relevant?
Megan's looking them up.
Yeah, there was definitely a meeting that night.
Yep.
So my calendar.
And it's on my calendar too, so. Dope. I mean, that's the only question I would have, is what did those minutes say, that might. Might bring clarity, might add more confusion.
Talking about checklist, waivers and checklists, um, alright, this is CDP, innovative land use. This is CDP outlines, consistency of the master plan.
So what about the land use regulations?
It's your turn, okay. Um. Like ask board if they would like to change regulations, okay. So this was within that, conceptual consultation and design review, both are non-binding, however, the design review is more complete. Regulations state that no drawings are to be used in a conceptual consultation, right, ask the board if they would like to change that in the regulations. He feels they are helpful for the prop, uh, for the application process. Matt referenced relevant RSA, the outline, specific language, consultation requirements, clarified uh that consultation and design review are non-binding, I'm trying to see if we actually voted on changing anything, um.
I don't know, I'm going off.
Sounds like there's one back there. Thank you. Um. The cha, the board have the authority to improve the complete application, checklist and regulations must be considered together, I'm not seeing anything about a vote, um.
I think given that.
Oh, here we go, regulations checklist update will be addressed at the next subcommittee meeting, um.
I remember.
Range updated, the boards with edits, we found necessary, Joshua suggested avoiding cross-references, subcommittee will change things, um. There will be updates and corrections to design review section, and that is the extent of it. No voting on anything, no option made.
Greg, remember there was a typo, we were looking up design review, and it was mischaracterized by five point four or six point two or something like that, and I found it.
Uh, that's right, it didn't, it was numbering.
There was some numbering.
It was just the numbering stuff.
Those are, those are technical.
Can I ask why we are picking through this? I mean, the document says it was adopted in November and then modified in March, why are we not?
We were trying to find out what the modification in March was about. Nobody recalls.
So it's.
So it's substantive, the date has to be a certain date.
Because.
But that would matter to people who already made applications.
There you go. Thank you, and that's exactly what it was.
The numbering.
She just found it, yeah, the numbering. Uh, it was about design review and it used to say section five point one, but it's actually five point four and six point seven, and that's the amendment that we.
So it sounds like it was adopted.
So that seems to me not substantive.
Correct.
Or effective in November.
Correct.
You've got non-substantive changes that you can make.
And those are indeed amendments, but they're not substantive, right, so.
We did. Right.
And you could, you could have a, an updated vote when you add the checklist to it.
Correct.
So we'll do it though.
Come, don't.
Num pro tunk. Well, we want, we want what we have now to be official and approved.
Correct.
And it it seems to me that the only thing required to do that is to get Sam to sign that, right?
I think so, because.
Have you, has everyone signed this, this is from November? I can't read.
The only one that wouldn't be on yet.
Without looking at it closer.
Is Brendan.
But he wasn't a member.
He wasn't a member, and who else?
John, John.
Joshua was.
Uh, my, my signature's on it.
John Snyder, John Snyder.
Right. John Snyder.
Snyder would be one of those signatures.
Do you recognize this?
There really probably should be a name for it, or something, I feel it's, like always.
Greg, me.
I think we should just all learn how to write.
There's Brendan O'Donnell right there.
No.
So last week.
Sounds like you don't have to approve them tonight. We don't have to, I think we're.
I think it's our, I think we're good.
We're good, and and I, for the people who already submitted applications that you guys heard two weeks ago, they are under the November whatever, it's all effective date, and that's all we care about.
Brendan's in November. Is one of these bottom three yours?
My, my, that's my signature.
Right there?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's Joshua's number four, Megan is, guy that wanted each yours.
The last one, me.
Last one?
Mm-hmm. You know, I think the next loss is me, block that, yes, that's me.
So.
So we're good, we're legal for for the applicant.
So. So this Greg, me, Brendan O'Donnell, Joshua, Logan, and Megan.
And it's.
Bring it to the town floor.
It's a, it's a, it's a forum, I don't know if it's everybody, but it's a forum.
Yeah, Brendan was an optimist, he was the only optimist that time, yeah. I think we're good.
I think we can get Sam to sign that.
Okay, can we shift gears, can we go to HOP?
It's time to do an intro meeting. I think, where have we been, where could you go, under the HOP, uh, you know, housing related zoning and regulation changes? And if you wanted to do that, we'd be ready to do it by this time next month.
Is that, that's a public, public hearing?
Yeah, online hearing, one of our meetings.
Just a informational meeting, and that happens at our regulator.
And we have, did this go to everybody?
Everyone has.
Okay, so if you guys look through what Michelle gave you, it'd be this paper here, this actually, is that, yeah, basically the.
Also have.
So.
Oh, yes, I do.
Some of all the meetings, right on Wheelhouse.
Yeah, this is the ones we like, yeah.
Isn't this, if we're doing it next month, doesn't this really matter what the legislature does, and we won't know until like first of July?
Probably, we are hearing that they are backing up a little bit. So you can, it looks like you can still develop on a class six road, but they're not gonna reduce your frontage to fifty feet. And they're not gonna reduce lot sizes to eighty eight thousand square foot now.
Excuse me, does it change anything on the class six road?
I, it looks like it changes it dramatically.
That's part of the innovative land use.
So this can be more.
They have to meet a couple of things, you know, and, you know. Yes, they're gonna fill out the liability form, and then the fire department's gonna go anyway, you know, but they filled out the liability form, they they need to show that they could be insured, which might be an issue.
Mm-hmm.
That would, that would be the block for someone developing fifteen hundred feet down a class six road.
So fifteen hundred feet.
Or whatever, as an example.
But unlimited is what it sounded like to me.
Class six road is unlimited, yeah, so I would bet though, that 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 insurance clause is the key. You have to prove to the town that you can get coverage for the, your your homeowner's insurance. Maybe there's all kinds of clauses there, but but that's, but that is a, that is, now, that it hasn't been signed, but that is kind of, you look at kind of where the teles are falling and.
But I don't care about homeowner's insurance.
Well, that's, they're basically saying, okay, everybody's gonna sign the waiver liability, and the fire department's always gonna go down there. Um, but if you can prove that you can be insured, that's, you know, that's the, that's the legislature saying, well, that's our, that's our safety.
That's your safety, but the safety valve, or a safety switch to keep somebody, so no more scattered and uh premature development.
In theory, yeah.
We can put that in our ordinance if we want.
What, that has to be?
No more scattered, you know, we can maintain that sort of language in our. But it's just with that statute.
That sense, yeah.
How that, yes, yes and no, you know, to.
Right, we don't know how this is gonna play out yet, but it, but it is, it is a big change for communities that that have not had, you know, kind of uh, uh, open, you know, welcomed that for class six road development.
Uh, that's all the more reason you get the road budget stuff into the CIP, I would think.
Well, I mean, that's not gonna be a class six road, road improvements.
Yeah.
That, that, if a class six road should be, you know, and and it's, you know, so, so the idea that you can, you need to be insured and you're signing the waiver, that's not saying that you're gonna bring that class six road up to class five standards. That's basically saying, go get out of here.
Tell you, yeah.
And, you know, I'm sure that will be figured out. It hasn't been signed yet, we don't know.
What do we know about insurance requirements?
Yeah.
If I were an insurance company and there were a wetland in between here and there, I'd be like, mm, cause I know.
They're gonna probably, one of the illnesses for to get an insurance is that you're gonna be able to be protected by the fire department, I would think. Do you have fire protection or?
It's circular, because you're saying, hey, you know, I'm signing the waiver liability, and it doesn't, you know, I I I wanna build out here and I'm not worried about.
And insurance companies are far more, you know. Restrictive than they were.
Well, even these days compared to a couple of years ago. Who knows? Um, so we thought we'd be reacting to a lot more from the legislature, and that's just been the last couple of weeks that there's been some of these that have been retained. They're still alive, you never know, they could come back at some point. Um, laid on the table versus retained, and you know, what does that mean?
Probably cause Megan and Greg showed up.
We can be sneaky and pull them out of the rabbit hole and have a quick vote.
They can pull. But, but I think uh some cooler heads about the dramatic changes and and I think the fifty foot frontage was an eye opener for a lot of folks, as well as the, you know, no lot sizes greater than eighty eight thousand square feet. But we don't know until the end of the session. Um, we could certainly do something at your regular meeting in July, be happy to do that, but but I think that that later June gets it before people really disappear.
And the reason to do July is because we know what the story was, short piece look, look.
We we're we're know, we know more every day about where the.
Legislative session, I think, never goes past like July second or third.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be done.
Chair, I have something um that I brought, it's pretty adjacent to this topic, um, I said last time that I was gonna have AI analyze our ordinance, find holes, find dependencies.
Interesting.
Um, so I have documents, just to be clear on the record, these are not, ideas for consideration, considering how I can sit on what's doing, um.
Can we save that for business or something? Cause we still got a bunch of things to get through here.
Yeah, I didn't really wanna talk about, I was just gonna hand them out since they're about.
Okay.
So no ordinance changes, but yeah, I'll hand them out, I can talk about them later.
I'm sorry, I I don't need to cut you off, it's just you got.
So I think that's, but that's the, the, those are those things that we wanna talk about through the HOP process. And, you know, if it ends up that there's some recommendations for town meeting twenty six, or something that go to town meeting twenty seven, there could very well be some places where you can still make some changes to your regs. And, you know, that could happen too, think, you know, you wanna lock down the checklist, but if there are some things that kind of throw out of this process and it's clear that that would be more straightforward to have it set this way, that could come out of this process too.
Definition is just one of the things people.
This is really interesting, and and I'll, I'll, you know, we, we'll look at that, I've been dabbling with AI. Doesn't do that creative child's dance, but it gives you the structure. But I I think where have we been, where could, what are the topics that that we've, you know, kind of related to housing, that we can talk about and get some feedback? Um, the whole idea of the workforce housing ordinance, and what that means, what it doesn't mean, how could it be improved? Uh, a little bit more of a discussion about some mixed use, and how that could be, you know, just, you know, potential, you know, within the confines of your ordinance, what could be done or not? And what does that mean?
I thought about that, we did, uh, identify the dirt, at least the definition of mixed.
Definitions or?
Definition of mixed use and to uh clarify.
Yeah.
Pretty sure that was one of the recommendations in there.
So, so if you wanted to do that, that that fourth week of June would be great for our staff.
What's our schedule look like for June? Said there's nothing for the tenth.
Tenth or the twenty?
Brendan was talking about. Um, canceling that meeting, but I don't know.
Tenth or the twenty fourth?
Twenty fo, so there's nothing in the hopper for the tenth, so we don't have any hearing or anything, so that meeting, he he was considering canceling that meeting.
I think that's a perfect way to embrace early June.
Yep. And so the twenty fourth, anything on the books?
Nothing.
Nothing. So. I'm thinking twenty fourth could be it.
Do something over there with pizza? Kinda embrace that.
I like pizza.
Six o'clock?
Put it in the minutes please, so Brendan can be advice that hijacked his agenda for the twenty fourth.
And I'm not sure how you, who, who, who paid for the pizza last time, not the dollar. And I'm not sure how you, who, who, who paid for the pizza last time, not the dollars.
Town, town paid for the pizza.
The town paid for it.
Was and.
I know, I I know on a couple of occasions I paid for it and the town paid me.
And you picked it up for us.
I could say.
So we could put together just some promotional stuff, it's early enough to get out there in the. Various social media emails, put it on the webpage, we've got plenty of time.
Yeah, the town newsletter.
Yeah, if we wanna do that this week then.
And town emails, yeah.
So we could work.
Is there not a planning board meeting on the tenth of June?
We didn't, that's not official, that's that's not official, that 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 was just spoken about in the last meeting.
And that was me giving you the the flexibility to not meet that night.
Okay.
And and basically it's, it's, we will, we can give you some language for it, but it's where have we been, so it's kind of a recap. Of the, you know, the housing chapter, the lead up to to last kind of meeting.
So how is it, is it just an open?
I think a little presentation about where we've been. And that could be, that we could talk about that, but I think it'd be great if it was, you know, a couple of you guys and and our staff, however you wanted to do that, this is where we've. This is kind of how we got here and just context, but then these are, these are some improvements.
Are you gonna share that?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And these are the options for where we could, you know, different conversations we could have, we could do some education about ADUs. We could talk a little bit more about cluster and, you know, just how we got to that. But then, you know, the idea of mixed use and what that means. Um, the whole, you know, what is workforce, what it's not, how can you can, how could you make improvements to your ordinance or not?
I'd like to hear what the public has, what their conception is on mixed use because that.
But it's part of the the legislative discussion too, you know, if you've got a commercial zone, you need to allow residential. Right, you know, and and or do you not, and what does that mean? The, uh, we can also talk about, there's some, a couple of new, there's a couple of new studies, New Hampshire Housing just did something last fall. About the number of projected kids by type of housing development.
Oh, really?
And the numbers are a lot smaller than you would think, and then we'll get to the conversation about. Yeah, phase and, you know, but but that's just, it's just more information for the conversation.
Yeah. Because we had recently had a submission and, you know, in the commercial zone and mixed use is allowed in the commercial zone. And what I'm thinking and seeing. Is the exact opposite of what was presented.
Right.
Where it was, we have a housing development here and a commercial area there, and because they're all together, it's mixed use. And that's not how I envision mixed use.
And I don't think that's the idea behind, you know, the classic definition of mixed use.
So I, I, we don't have that definition and we need to.
So so let, let's talk, we can have that be one topic, it's just what is mixed use?
Yeah.
How do you define it, but what are the examples that we're talking about?
Get some input from citizens.
Yep.
I think that's huge, that's a big one. And um.
We claim, we claim that ordinance up a lot, but they're still, they're still working.
It's always work to be done.
Never ending. So Brendan wanted to, um, he wanted to be, he wanted me to make sure that, um, apparently this came from Grace Warwick. Who's Grace?
Grace is our New Hampshire housing contact.
Okay, and she gave him some examples, these were the examples that were given to him that I showed you that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um.
So we have, we have this that we talked about in April, that's the public engagement kind of outlines, just, so very similar to that.
Okay.
And they gave us this format.
Well, he's under the gun, he had, he wanted us to talk about any other suggestions because he has to send them to Grace by Saturday.
And I will make sure that he has everything that he needs built upon the base, we'll lay out the the article and I've got a copy of that. But I'll make sure he has everything he needs.
Okay.
I should ask if anybody's got any brilliant new ideas of getting the community engaged.
He said no to the worst. He said no to the worst or hold your peace.
I mean, I know a consistent bit of feedback is that the timing is hard for parents.
The parents ask for early times, and parents could.
Yeah.
Could ask for that.
We're gonna run it six instead of sound. That might, might sell the slide like right.
And also the pizza is part of that. It it.
I don't care how old the kid is, a kid likes.
Yeah, nobody wants to deal with their kid sitting through one of these meetings, so that sounds like a problem.
Oh yeah, we have, oh, that's the, uh, the real good childcare, guys.
Yeah, I'm sure you're providing childcare, you know, this is a solid.
That would be, that would be a lovely. If we could find some, yeah, what does some are.
We have a timeline, a strategy.
And videos, playing for videos.
That's how basically what Grace had sent over to me.
Greg, he did a series of videos about war articles and things like that, that were really helpful to people some of these.
I did one, and Joshua did one, Joshua did one before, I'm I'm happy to do that.
So sort of.
What's that document title?
This is a HOP community engagement plan draft, maybe they can link the material.
And Michelle's going to be the videographer this time, because Angela's down.
I thought I was gonna watch the kids.
That's what you want to do?
Yeah, I I'd rather watch the kids than run a video too.
I I I'm I'm fine at like putting together the material for a video, but I don't have the expertise to actually create a video.
Okay. I think that would be, you know, that'd be great to to take that next step and to have something that somebody can look at. Um. I love chitter chattering, I hate to see myself on video, but I think that's a classic.
You did a good job with that. But I like, my son like took it from my, I I mean, I recorded myself and then he like made it look like a video, I don't, I don't know how to do that, I'm not sure.
I just. These kids, they play game, video game, I was just inherent.
Well, Edgeridge is very helpful, I'm sure.
So so I will add some of the videos to that, you know, these are options, you don't have to do everything, but this is laying out what the options are for community engagement. You know, again, you guys were one of those towns that were in in the. And New Hampshire Housing, you know, used you guys as a success story. And part of that was the pizza and the early meetings and. That engagement, which was was uncomfortable at times and got, but was was pretty good.
Well, I think, you know, you were asking for suggestions and how to get people out, I think there's a number of key people in town who managed to get people out, I think Clifton is one. I think, um, Allison Wachonfi is is one that. Uh, it seems like once they know a bunch of people.
Sure.
Uh, conservation commission is really quite interested in the subject.
We saw Canton yesterday in the office, painted up some maps that Matt B had put together for him. We see a lot of him, one is six months here in Cambry. Great. Okay. Um, I will relay, Brendan will know that information. Thank you for putting me early in the agenda. I I have so many boards that I sit there till the very end.
We have a habit of doing that, and if we have these visitor, we tend to. Embrace that and that's why you like us, and then you come back.
I I do.
And you come back again and then we can get more work out of you.
Oh, when our basement is so cold and then you wait to the end, so you just walk, you're you're feet are cold, it doesn't matter what the season is.
It's in July.
You, okay. Well, yeah, we're gonna piecemeal this agenda, we're all in a place, so we did three C and three D. Um, Greg has a good suggestion, um. You want to say just for another moment in regards to do you want to add, we can go master plan chapter nine solid waste. Do you have any input?
I didn't have anything other than nice job.
Okay, then, well, we'll circle back around.
I don't, I'm not, it's not my, it's not my.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll preface it and I'll explain it.
Yeah, so but but Riley enjoyed putting it into that format from our staff.
Thank you.
And, um, you know, I think it, we had thought that it would be, and I just, we weren't communicating about, this should be just an add-on to the community facilities, but yes, it should be a standalone chapter.
Yeah. Oh, and and we're not into it yet, but we'll come back around and what I did was, um, I took the ten year. Say in New Hampshire solid waste plan, I went through it, I took sections of it and put it in there, so. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. We'll see you in a month, we'll talk early and often about the, the one about going and talking about CIP with the sub board, but also the the PR materials for the meeting.
Thank you so much. Might give you a feedback about that document, just you know, to me.
Um.
I'm fronting myself.
That's gonna be very interesting to.
And if there's something in there like that explanation doesn't make sense, it it may be my prompt, so you can.
So.
Questioned it may not be an an actress with AI streaming or something, maybe I asked the wrong question, so you're be better help me ask the right question.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll come back around and let's go to the minutes for May thirteenth.
I sent a couple corrections to.
I have them.
Michelle, and, um, now that I'm sitting here with you, just I would like to note another one in that, um, I should be listed under members absent. It does, like, two paragraphs later say two members were absent.
So you should be listed as being absent?
Yeah. I had just gotten back from a trip and I fell asleep and didn't wake up.
I was in the hospital.
That's a really good excuse, that's better than mine.
Okay, so, um.
A staph infection, my foot was in the hospital for four days.
That's that's horrible.
IV antibiotics.
Does anybody need a minute to look at the minutes? Or are we good to move on or do one moment? Does anybody need a moment? Nigga?
No, I'm good.
I move.
Okay.
To accept the minutes of May thirteenth as amended?
Seconded.
Any discussion?
I'm abstaining, you know, it there.
Okay.
I would also abstain, but I wasn't there.
So Logan's amendments is line fifty four seems to be missing a word or punctuation. If we look at line fifty four. Yes, I used to then. Look, explained that this was the fifth subdivision of the property prior to making it four.
I think it wants to say maybe fifth subdivision of the property and prior to nine, or maybe period prior to nineteen seventy. I wasn't here, so I don't know what it should have said, I just know that whatever it says now doesn't quite make sense.
I don't know what to put in there.
The whole sentence doesn't make sense, the final dependent cause is really dependent.
Sometimes, but it doesn't make sense.
I would suggest, in the absence of any better ideas, property, period, capitalized prior.
Oh, that's what it probably was.
And strike two nineteen seventy four.
No, no, it's period after the word property and then start a new sentence with prior.
No.
At least that makes sense, whether it's out, it will happen, I.
That works.
It would make sense and it would be an error caused simply by you not hitting the period, so.
You get that? Which line?
What line?
Fifty four.
Fifty four.
Fifty four, put a period after property.
Capitalize prior.
Correct. Correct. And then the next one he has line one twenty three, I think you want divvy not dive.
It's no longer one twenty three, it seems like it had moved.
Um.
One twenty one.
Yeah, there it is.
In this document, I'm pretty sure it was one twenty three when I looked at it before, but.
It was for me too.
Yeah, okay.
I introduce a list of potential one thousand of them.
Divided would also make sense, but dive certainly just not.
Yeah. Yeah, so change dive to divvy, put it at an, add a V and an I.
Not divided, divvy, I guess name is the same.
Who wants divvy?
Well, he did, he suggested that we, that we address them over in the period, right?
Yeah.
I could hear you use divided, not divvy.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yeah, ED, yeah. Good?
I have no more sense, Grace.
So there's a motion, we discussed it. Oh. All in favor of the minutes as amended for May thirteen twenty five?
Chair, I have a point of order before you vote on that, there's only three people that can vote, is that a quorum and does it matter?
I believe that.
Oh, you're you're voters.
I believe that we've previously answered that, as long as there is a quorum, people abstaining does not affect the fact that there is a quorum.
You can get full going or. There is.
That's what I believe, I didn't know that.
I feel like we 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 discussed this later, every time I hear abstaining, yeah.
I forgot.
Yeah.
I would probably forget them.
So again, so again, all in favor?
I.
Aye, all opposed? Minutes passed. Moving on to Sledge draft ordinance.
Hmm, too much.
Okay, I have a really big comment that makes sense all the way through this, the statute RSA one forty seven one calls these regulations. And these, the selectmen are not authorized to adopt ordinance, they are. Authorized to adopt regulations and the word ordinance shows up a dozen times at least throughout this thing and every one of them is wrong. And I think it's just illegal the way it's written, that's, all the ordinance have to change to regulation.
Well, that's gonna be a big problem.
Yeah.
An easily fixed one.
Easily fixed. And other than that, I thought it was great.
Who put this together?
I think Brendan.
Brendan?
Um, I read it, I thought it was great.
Yeah.
Um. If you turn to the last page, um. Gives you a little bit of history, I remember this, that to make it more defendable. Um, it is suggested that a board of selectmen adopted as opposed to being a zoning ordinance. Uh, because there was a case, I think it was Tilton?
Yes.
Uh, where it was challenged and because it was a board of selectmen.
Yeah.
Ordinance, um, it won.
Regulation.
Relying on RSA chapter one forty seven, this will ultimately need to be proposed by the VOS, by the town's current health officer, Jeff Hubbell. The VOS can then approve the ordinance.
Regulation.
So just as a matter of courtesy, can we have a discussion, can somebody have a discussion with, uh. Brendan about this regulation versus ordinance, so.
Yeah, I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight, I think just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that should be a fine new replace kind of scenario.
And it says BAO notes, that's BOSS.
Is that the type? Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, for BAO.
Where you said.
Where, on the top of page three.
Uh, that's Brendan O'Donnell.
Ah.
Notes from Brendan O'Donnell. I assume he's been a name search.
Um, number three, I kept the order simple and flexible.
Regulation.
Uh, and the void should feel free to add in any specific types of contaminated materials to the definition, for example. Our wonderful Dirty Garrett.
I I thought that was pretty well included, I can.
I I thought that was pretty well included, I think in the definitions, uh, poses contaminated materials specifically include septic sludge and. I I mean, I didn't know what else to put there, but isn't that what dirty dirt is, is septic sludge?
No, no.
No, it's actually, it's contaminated with chemicals.
No.
It's treated dirt.
It's treated to reclaim contaminated material.
It's it's reclaimed dirt, for example, when they remove gas tanks from the ground and they take that dirt. And it's supposedly contaminated, so then they take it to their facility and they treat it with P.
Right.
So it's not sludge, it's just dirt that they're trying to repurpose.
So the board of selectmen can determine if they wanna add anything else to that, but do we wanna make some sort of suggestions?
Suggestions?
Uh, how do we feel about specifically mentioning PFAS and PFAS-type chemicals?
Yeah.
Um.
And the and the the um.
Well, where?
Conservation Commission.
I feel like a lot of things are covered by present or potential threat to human health or the environment, frankly, that's very broad.
Yes.
Possibly too broad, possibly unenforceably broad, but rather than listing a zillion things, that covers a whole lot.
It's like everything in California says this causes cancer.
The state of California is probably in violation of of this regulation under it, um.
Contaminated, so that last sentence, contaminated materials include septic sludge and PFAS wouldn't fall under that category because it's a chemical.
PFAS is what is in septic sludge that is given while the town.
Well, it's not the item, it's the root cause, it's a chemical.
I I went to the Conservation Commission to talk about this, it's about a year ago now, and they had pretty well-developed thoughts about, but I realize now, how that sentence should end.
But perhaps we should ask them for suggestions before we finally ask them.
Yeah, I'm guessing that Ken Stern and Kelly Kelly, Kelly Short.
Frankly, that'd probably be pretty annoying if we didn't ask them, because that's very much their area.
Yeah. Yeah, and they and they'll have a rough, hard answer to that.
They'll have a good answer, yeah.
I think the examples are helpful and the language can be contaminated materials include but are not limited to. So people know it's a non-exhaustive list, but there is a list of what we're talking about, does that the example?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not saying we shouldn't list some things, I'm just saying we we shouldn't concern ourselves with listing every possible thing.
Right.
I would be inclined to put a higher fine on this.
Sorry, what?
A higher fine, this 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 provides for a fine of fifty dollars per day, which.
No. You can't.
You can, no, the statute doesn't limit it.
It denies.
Well. What it is, is violations are intended to be low-level fines. The the actual fine is the abatement of.
Read number four, yeah.
And 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 having to fix the problem, it's not a monetary. Monetary fine, it's just a.
Yeah.
A point, it it's not intended to be, I mean, it could be a dollar, for all that matters.
I I think statutorily, you can have violation fines could be up to a grand or two grand, I forgot what it pays for this, but a lot higher than fifty.
No, no. No.
So I wanna explain my basic.
Even over a grand is a misdemeanor.
The the people that you really need to worry about are not the individual citizens doing nonsense.
Yes, yes, so it's a coin.
Oh, it's up to granted.
The people you have to worry about are commercial entities doing this nonsense, and for a commercial entity, fifty dollars a day is irrelevant.
Right.
That's that's why I'm thinking we might wanna consider putting a slightly higher number on that.
It's the super fund in the third paragraph that is the serious monetary, you know, hammer.
The responsible for all costs, yeah.
Remediation, right?
But it also says that not everything requires, so if any violation that requires remediation, well, who's determining that? And if it doesn't require remediation, we're only fining fifty dollars.
I'm just saying, fifty dollars a day is not a deterrent of any kind to this sort of people who are causing actual problems and.
So we're talking about the idea that it doesn't cover the cost of enforcement or run up of processing or complaint.
And it probably does not cover the cost of enforcement, no.
And that was another critique I had was that there is no enforcement procedure on how violations are reported, inspected, or formally noticed?
I mean, presumably one has to report it to the select board, since that's where is the statutory authority to create the regulation.
But it's almost to see, that's an angle here and it's a way, there's no direction, they could go to Ken.
Do you think there's questions for Brenda if you wanna come back? Is somebody writing down all these questions for Brendan?
We shall listen. If you guys are nice and and speak clearly and not overt talk of each other, she's trying to cap her, she's doing her best.
Overall, I would say this looks like a really good start.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it it, I think it's great as it is and just like anything else, um, you run into hiccups when you go to enforce something. I mean, you can try your hardest to make something perfect, but there's always a problem somewhere. Um, and that's why laws get changed and get amended, um, because.
Why Joshua has a problem?
There's always, there's always somebody out there that finds the loophole.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, a violation is, this is statute reading, a violation is an offense so designated blah blah blah. In the case of a corporation or an unincorporated association, offenses defined outside of this code are violations if the amount of any such fine provided does not exceed fifty dollars.
What?
Because unclearly.
Can you translate that out of order?
That's 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 our say, that's. I'm not gonna get into that, I mean, it it's a level of infraction, you got violations, misdemeanors, misdemeanors, you have A's and B's and then you have felony.
I know that.
And all those strap, those structures are put in place by limit, the fine limits and what the penalties are, so.
A violation is an offense so designated by statute, within or outside this code, I guess our ordinances and regulations probably is, except, okay. Any offense defined outside of this code for which there is no other penalty provided other than a fine or a fine in forfeiture or other civil penalty.
Oh, is that saying if nobody defines the penalty, then it's violation, fifty dollars?
Then it's violation, yeah. In the case of a corporation, offenses defined outside of this code are violations if the amount of any such fine provided does not exceed fifty dollars. So it's a violation, so if it's fifty dollars, then it's a under fifty dollars, then it's a violation for a corporation.
Ah. So does that mean we want to keep that fine limit at fifty dollars, or does it?
Well, we need to talk to a lawyer if we if we started getting to misdemeanor law, and I'm not sure we have the authority to make them, I but I don't think they should.
So we need a lawyer, we are a lawyer?
Well, or a.
I'm just a lawyer, nevermind.
Josh, you are, you're not the lawyer, you're not a lawyer.
Okay.
So this is gonna go to the select board, this would you guys recommend?
Sir. So what we have so far is that we are going to, um, defer the select board to talk to the Conservation Commission? Or are we gonna solicit this Conservation Commission, um, in terms of.
You should invite them to our meeting.
For our meeting, when we put this on the agenda.
Yeah.
Right?
They'll come.
Well, you guys are the author of the document.
Yeah. Yeah.
Kelly Short will come.
Yeah, okay, for certain she will.
And the other issue, and that's our issue, is what gets included? And we have a question about fines and how how maybe we can make them higher or not, but we need, Brendan actually knows, she's a good officer.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that he couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah.
But if we discuss it at another meeting, presumably we will also have the author of the document.
Ken.
And Hubs, what what does he do here? The line of.
Is that?
Um.
The health officer.
The the term, the town's health officer.
Jeff Hubble, I don't know the.
That's that's, you know him as Hubs, maybe. It needs to be, but what does he have to do?
It says he has to.
That's what I meant, that there's no enforcement procedure.
No, it says this this meaning presumably this regulation has to be proposed to the board.
There's two different parts. Oh, so he has to be the former person to propose.
By the health officer, yeah.
To propose the select board is what that's.
So we should invite, we should invite him to the same meeting so that he knows he has a duty or a obligation or a discretion or whatever it is.
He should.
To, um, to 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 make, write the letter or hand it to the select man or whatever, to keep it tied.
I don't believe so, not as far as I know.
And that's what I'm saying, he is likely the enforcer of such a language, he's likely to be involved?
Is is.
It sounds that from this language that Brendan is saying that the proposal to the select board has to come to him again.
I'm sure Brendan has a plan and I'm sure he was planning on being here, um, so I'm doing the best to fill in, but it seems like, um.
So we table it?
Hunt further discussions and.
I I think we have some.
Enforcement is a.
Input into the minutes, you got the questions, um, and big thing is that, um, the next whenever, I mean. The tenth or the twenty-fourth or July or whatever, um, he needs to invite Kelly Short and Jeff Hubble so that we can fill in the blanks here. And then get the ball rolling so that Jeff can take and ultimately give it to the select. Make sense?
Yeah.
Move on. Okay, uh, master plan solid waste. So, uh, I'll just give you a little bit of background, um, I wrote this six months ago. Um, it was right after the legislature season last year. Um, and the Chapter Nine Solid Waste Chapter was authorized by the state of New Hampshire into towns that have multiple chapters for their master plan. So this is brand new, I did a search, no other town at a draft. Um, so the first place that I went to was this, um, state of New Hampshire Solid Waste Master Plan. Um, state of New Hampshire just adopted their own master plan for solid waste in September of twenty-two. And what I did was, in this document, I went through it and I took all parts and pieces and formulated it using somewhat loosely a format of what we had been working on with other chapters and I gave it to Mike Cardiff, who then gave it to his, um, worker, one of his employees. And they put it into the format that it is here. So I think if you want a moment to read it, look at it, it's not very long. Um, and then maybe if we can circle back and maybe go paragraph by paragraph and offer edits.
And and some other next meeting or tonight?
Um.
But by the way, I read this this afternoon and it was tremendously educational and and thank you for doing that that night.
You're welcome. Um, I think if we did some, Brendan wants to. His intention was to be a work, this be a work meeting for this, um. I mean, presuming that it was given to you before he had date thirty, what else do we have on the agenda? Yeah, this is it.
Making work as new business.
Yeah. So do we wanna go through this paragraph by paragraph, offer edits?
Given the time, maybe we'd love to.
Date thirty. Not that late, compar- comparatively.
I was gonna say we could each like send in a list of edits as we do for minutes.
I would second that.
Did you say you would second that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I have two things that you might be able to easily address.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what who NARA is, I I I'm not sure it's.
They're a private organization, um, New Hampshire.
It's just.
Resource Recovery.
Yeah. They just, they're they're not defined here, they're cited, they're not defined, and the other thing is, um, in the recommendations section, it says join the state surplus program.
Yeah.
And that also is not mentioned anywhere in the body, so I didn't know what that was. And I'm guessing that's because you collapsed it from some longer document.
Rich, couple of questions for me.
Yeah.
Nine point two survey and results, you say responses rate, it should be response rate, was thirty-six percent, but what was the number, thirty-six percent of what?
Where where are you at? Nine point zero survey.
Survey and results, yeah.
Which question?
The response rate is thirty-six percent.
Response rate. It's in the first paragraph.
That that means the rate of of people responding to it.
Uh.
No, I'm asking for a specific number. What you're saying, thirty-six percent of what?
The total mailings.
Presumably. Of the number of people serving.
Okay, right, once again, what was the number? I think you need to define more closely, thirty-six percent doesn't tell me anything.
Thirty-six percent of the number of surveys that were mailed that were distributed were returned.
Okay, so that's what you should say?
Yeah.
And then eighty-five point five percent of residents, so is that based on your surveys?
Correct.
So really, it should be eighty-five percent respondents.
Yeah, respondents. And that would hold for the remainder of that paragraph.
Does that response rate take into account people filling out the online version of that?
Well, that's kind of my point.
Yes.
Okay.
Then, yes, so.
But it would be useful to know if only ten people responded. And we don't know, that's that's, I think that's the.
That is, it's just like.
We got three hundred and sixty-seven responses, total responses.
Yeah, that you might wanna put that after the thirty-six percent.
Right.
That's an impressive number.
Yeah, all I'm asking is.
That's almost as many people as guilty as how much.
Define what you said. Yeah. All right, nine point three, first paragraph, um, we refer to required air and water monitoring.
Required air and water monitoring by the state, yeah.
What's the required air monitoring?
Ken told me that they're monitoring the air.
Okay, could you check on that?
Are there really air monitors over there?
Not that I'm aware, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I just, ninety-one A to all of Aries' engineering reports, there's no air monitor going on, it's groundwater monitoring.
Yeah. That would be news to me as well.
So we went through this with Seabrook and air monitoring is like a whole complicated thing.
Yes, it is.
Ken.
All right, and then, um, moving on, objectives and recommendations, I think you've got a couple of words mixed up. Um, continue to account in a capital reserve fund, I think you want to say continue to fund a capital reserve account.
Say that again, Scott.
So so I think what you're trying to say is continue to fund a capital reserve account to prepare for eventual land.
In this next sentence after the word capital reserve also should be account.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then to sort of tag it on Joshua's point, on nine point five again, bullet point one, consider participation in the state surplus program for future purchases of what? I'm not sure what.
Equipment, yeah.
Okay, but I I would once again ask, what, what are we gonna be relying that we should possess it?
Yeah, no.
Rich, do you want us to give you all of our corrections tonight, or do you wanna take any?
No, um.
Seems like we're halfway through it.
Cause like I've I've got a few, but.
No, there's probably gonna be a lot more, and people are, if, I'm fine tabling it, if if you guys want. Will give me the changes, um, prior to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we probably need to send them to Michelle, no, we could send them to you individually, I wouldn't, not since you.
You could send them to me individually, that would not be a violation already now.
Yeah. Yeah, just trying to follow the rules. Yeah, just trying to follow the rules.
Um, and if you send them to me, then I can, I'll collate them, um.
And run an updated version.
And run an updated version.
I think the town of Guilford has no U V N.
That was on my list, yeah.
I know it's counter, counterintuitive.
Also, I'm just curious that the separating waste components and including styrofoam is separate? I'm always told to just throw it in the truck, do we really separate styrofoam?
We do now.
Okay.
And it's styrofoam, but it's there, um, it's that rigid stuff that's like packed around a computer monitor or TVs or whatever that.
Okay, so not like.
It's not like a styrofoam cup or styrofoam plate.
When did they start collecting styrofoam, just out of curiosity?
About who else?
Because I had not heard about that until this week.
When?
The what?
When did the styrofoam collection start?
Pretty recently.
Um.
Recent, yeah.
Well, they've been doing it for a couple of years. Um, Guilford started the program, there is a spoken hub model. Um, they tried to get us, it was something that we looked at on the solid waste committee, we just didn't have space. Um, as you can see, if you've been to the transfer station recently, the styrofoam is slowly overwhelming the access into the packer truck.
Didn't understand.
It's, it's that rigid styrofoam, and incidentally, we advertised, they're looking for volunteers. It's a really cool process, um, they're looking for volunteers to pull a two-hour shift. You can go online, you can sign up, and you can go up there, and they take this stuff, it gets melted down and it comes out like a grade, um, and then it's resold and repurposed. It, it's a fascinating process.
Can I suggest that you maybe get that information inserted into a news letter or the email newsletter something like that?
We've tried, we've tried, we've tried.
I literally have no idea.
Either was or.
We mean, I mean, how sends out anything you send, it's gonna be, you know.
We tried, yeah, it's, um, we tried to get it on the website. The, the problem is, is that the employee that does that is swamped. She's trying to navigate her job while still, I, I could give her a while, I, I could almost employ her full-time just stuff that's solid waste, and that's a joke, but, um, yeah, no, the stuff is there. Um, it has a sway say, I had literature on it, um, which is a QR code that brings you straight to the process and, um, sign up.
I, I, like, that's something I basically did, I'm just saying, like, I literally had no idea, and I have styrofoam that I would have brought in, but I don't.
And to what you said, Rich, if it's the, the rigid styrofoam, in here it says light styrofoam is separated, just so you know.
Where?
Um, on nine point three, when it's a second paragraph, uh, station into separate waste components, and it gives the waste components, it says light styrofoam will be burned during the process.
I'm still trying to find.
Is the rate essentially is heavy styrofoam?
Well, he said the rigid.
Well, yeah, I know, but I just feel like the term light is sort of meaningless and irrelevant when it comes to styrofoam.
It's, it's very like, it's like heavy wire. Megan, where, where are you seeing this?
So, page nine point three, second paragraph, when, in, in the parentheses, where it's still relating to the separate waste components after light bulbs, it says light styrofoam, and if Rich is saying this is actually, we take the rigid styrofoam, it's a rigid styrofoam.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's different, it, it's, yeah, um, it's both.
So there are the technical terms for different kinds of type styrofoam, I can raise your remote.
Yeah, there is, there is.
All right.
Okay.
So we're gonna email to Rich any additional changes?
Action item, all members. Read solid waste management, chapter nine, send edits to Rich, directly to Rich, not reply all, not to the whole board. Um, like I said, I wrote this six months ago, and it just was low priority, it got buried, low priority, it got buried. My intention was to get it included in our master plan, but it was just low priority and.
It can be in the first chapter of our new plan to have a rolling.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
I know this has been your favorite, Rich, and I think you did a good job.
You're the first of the new. Yeah, great, thank you, Rich.
And I, this is a worthwhile inclusion.
Okay, last, I, you know, well, let's make him wants to add her thing, um, is the adoption of land use? No, we're done, that's done, we're good. Right? You just gotta give that to Sam, correct?
Correct.
Megan, do you wanna speak a little bit on your AI?
Uh, sure, yeah, I just, um, this was my first crack at having, um, I'm hello, I'm here, explaining which bottle do, um, an analysis of our ordinance. Um, I used a couple of specific prompts, look for any inconsistencies, redundancies, or errors. So those are what this first section is, um, minimal grammatical typographic issues, which I think speaks to Rich's, um, efforts in finding all of the typos and double words and all of that, that there are only three sections that it showed, um, you know, missing punctuation and things. Um, so, you did it? Um, then I asked.
I call that a win.
This may change with what Mike said in terms of the state legislature backing off on some of these stricter state, uh, current states ordinances, laws, whatever, um, but I ask, keeping in mind the impending legislation on housing coming through the New Hampshire State House, um, give me some policy and strategic improvements to our ordinance, and these are the recommendations here on page two and we're going on to page three. Um, on things that would be within our control to do if these, um, if this legislation passes. Um, and then the other one, um, was ideas for managing large development. That would be on page three and four. Um, and then I remember I had a note that we were talking about, um, improving specificity of our CUP. So there's a lot of pages here on ideas on that, including, um, I made a note on purpose-based infrastructure, so scale-based, scale and purpose-based infrastructure thresholds, um, and how we might be able to tighten, uh, our CUP with those. So that's on, I have pages six and seven. I noticed in the minutes, and I did not ask this of the AI, but, um, that we did discuss, um, how we can improve our ag zone use, so I can, or in our mixed use, clarifying those definitions in languages, so I can go in and I made notes to ask it.
Yeah, I'm surprised it didn't pick up. I'm curious what it would find if you.
It picks up what I specifically asked for, so I didn't have it do abroad. I asked for specific things, because if you go too broad, it can start to do wonky stuff. So, um, I will go in and ask it about ag zone management, classics, words, and definitions of mixed use, and how to tighten that up and improve things.
Okay.
But these are just, these are ideas for us to consider, um, as we look to making, um, our land use regulations better.
Thank you.
Could be refreshing reading.
Perhaps things that people considered and then maybe things that it sounds like, oh, that's a good idea.
A lot of things here we've talked about, aren't there?
Yeah. I recognize a lot of stuff. Okay. Perfect. I got a lot, I got an hour and a half, things like to.
You feel like you're gonna watch a movie, you know that.
Probably. Smooth turn. Any other business? Does anybody have any other business? One more, one more twice, I need a motion.
Watch it to a turn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody close?